All right, do I have a motion to return to open session? I have a motion in a second. Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies? And only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed sessions were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second, Ms. Drake. Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Do I have a motion regarding student A?
I motion that we long-term suspend student A.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond? Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Do I have a motion regarding student B?
I move that we long-term suspend student B until the end of the school year.
I have a motion in a second. Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. All right, thanks everybody for being here tonight. As we begin tonight's meeting, I ask those in the audience to please remember to silence your cell phones. Cell phone notifications can be distracting for others in the audience and to us, the board, as we conduct our business up here. Thanks. I think all or most of our student representatives are here tonight for recognition, and I don't know if any of them want to volunteer to read our mission, vision, and core values statement one last time. All right.
(laughter) [applause] MCPS is an innovative educational community. We value diversity, and we are committed to equity and inclusion. MCPS empowers learners to realize success in an ever-changing global society through collaboration with communities, family, staff, and students. MCPS provides a safe, engaging learning environment and intentional exposure to positive social, emotional, and academic experiences. The beliefs are that all students can learn in order to pursue their dreams. Schools are safe places of joy, wonder, and creativity. Every person deserves to be loved, valued, and respected. Kindness is an essential skill of a responsible, productive community member. The diversity of our community is one of our greatest strengths. All people deserve equitable access to opportunities and resources. Every child deserves an advocate. Honoring the voices of students and other stakeholders strengthens the school community. Open communication and feedback are vital to our growth. Learning and teaching are collective efforts that begin at birth and involve the entire community. Opening, oh, relationship building and high expectations are foundational to student success.
Thank you so much, Jim. And I'll ask while you're still up here, but you don't have to do that. I don't want to put you on the spot, but do any of our school student representatives have any reports or anything to share from their schools that they'd like to? You're welcome to come up and do it, but...
I just want to thank you for letting me sit on the school board and for the opportunity.
All right, thank you. It was our honor. All right, next on the agenda is the April seniors of the month. So I ask the principals to come up and start that.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Brigant, it is my pleasure to present to you Auburn High School's Senior of the Month. This evening, I'd like to recognize Kayden Blake Booth as the Auburn High School May Senior of the Month. Kayden is here this evening with his parents. I'd like to invite them to come up and join me. I'd like to read a brief statement from one of our staff members. Over the last four years, it has been a great pleasure getting to know Kayden. He always has a smile on his face and greets everyone with a hello. I remember meeting Kayden for the first time as a freshman at our back-to-school night. It's amazing how quickly those last four years have gone. He came up and introduced himself and seemed so eager to be starting at AHS. Over the years, I have seen him grow and really find what interests him. He has participated and completed in the Virginia Aerospace Science and Technology Scholars and Virginia Earth System Science Scholars Program. Listening to him speak about these programs and his future as a student at Christopher Newport is very exciting. We appreciate the positive energy he has brought to AHS over the last four years and wish him the best in the future. Congratulations, Kayden.
Good evening, school board members. It is my honor to present to you Raheem Mateen as our May Senior of the Month. At this time, I'd like to invite Raheem to come up along with his guests tonight. As they're coming up, you'll notice on the slide, we asked Raheem's current and former teachers to provide just a few words to describe him, and Ms. Drake helped to put it into a world for us. And you can see the one that sticks out the largest is inquisitive, because I think three or four of his teachers use that exact word to describe Raheem. All right, here's what one of our staff members had to say about Raheem. Raheem is a hard-working, driven, and motivated student. In 2021, halfway through the school year, he moved to Blacksburg from Afghanistan. Since arriving at Blacksburg High School, he has overcome the challenges of adjusting to a new education system, community, and country. At BHS, he has taken an interest in our computer science and cybersecurity programs and been very successful in his coursework. Raheem plans to attend New River Community College in the fall. We are proud of all that Raheem has accomplished at BHS and are excited to see his future endeavors. Congratulations, Raheem.
Good evening, board members. It is my pleasure to introduce the May Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School. This person is David Lee Curry. David, will you come with your family at this time? When asking some of his teachers to describe David, they said, "Truly to know David is to love him. He is an amazing student who has left a great first and forever impression on me and others and the students here at CHS. He is the social butterfly and ray of sunshine that every school needs. David is funny, caring, talented, and engaging. In class, David always manages to lighten the mood and make everyone laugh while still being able to focus on the task at hand. David is talented in more ways than one. Outside the classroom, he has a talent for music and loves to share that with everyone. His engaging personality and social skills make him a joy to be around, and his positive attitude is contagious. I feel lucky to have the opportunity to teach David, and I'm grateful for the impact he has had on CHS. Once again, I'd like to introduce and honor David Lee Curry."
Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize the May Senior of the Month for Christiansburg High School. This person is David Lee Curry. David, will you come with your family at this time?
When asking some of his teachers to describe David, they said, "Truly to know David is to love him. He is an amazing student who has left a great first and forever impression on me and others and the students here at CHS. He is the social butterfly and ray of sunshine that every school needs. David is funny, caring, talented, and engaging. In class, David always manages to lighten the mood and make everyone laugh while still being able to focus on the task at hand. David is talented in more ways than one. Outside the classroom, he has a talent for music and loves to share that with everyone. His engaging personality and social skills make him a joy to be around, and his positive attitude is contagious. I feel lucky to have the opportunity to teach David, and I'm grateful for the impact he has had on CHS. Once again, I'd like to introduce and honor David Lee Curry."
Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize the May Senior of the Month for Eastern Montgomery High School, Logan Boone. As is sometimes the case, the students who most deserve this distinction are the busiest students in our building. Logan is unable to attend this evening because she's the goalkeeper on our girls' soccer team, and they have a game this evening. She is attempting not only to keep her team's undefeated streak alive, but she also has a streak of her own. She has yet to allow a goal this season, and I really hope that I didn't just jinx her.[1646.33][1646.33](laughter) While Logan can't be here, her parents Stacy and Josh Boone are here to accept the award, and I ask them to come forward at this time.[1654.12][1654.12](applause) I'd like to now read a quote from one of her teachers, Britten Hippel. "Logan is an outstanding senior leader at EMHS. She is bright and inquisitive, asking probing questions that provide insights which not only demonstrate her interest and grasp of science, but add greatly to the value of classroom discussions. Logan also brings her leadership skills as a student athlete as she is a multi-year letter winner in volleyball, soccer, and basketball. EMHS will truly miss her when she graduates in May and attends James Madison University." Congratulations to Logan and her parents.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our seniors. At this time, in our agenda, we would like to recognize our student school board representatives. Mr. Tribaka?
Good evening, board. It's been a while since I've been down here. I guess I should get used to it, huh? So the participation of the school board representatives on the Montgomery County School Board is a vital part of giving voice to students in our school system. And tonight, we recognize this year's student school board representatives for their thoughtful participation and dialogue throughout the year. And I'd just like to add on a personal note, I think this has been one of the most assertive group of student school board reps that we've had, and it's just been a joy to have you guys on the board. I think this is really more what we envisioned when we kind of started this program, and you guys have done a fantastic job in bringing ideas and bringing the student perspective to us, so we really thank you for that. We'll start off with Emma Whitaker from Auburn High School.[1768.45][1768.45](applause) Congratulations. See if we get a photo? (inaudible)[1772.45] I think this is really more what we envisioned when we kind of started this program, and you guys have done a fantastic job in bringing ideas and bringing the student perspective to us, so we really thank you for that. We'll start off with Emma Whitaker from Auburn High School. Next, we have Sam Woolsey, who's unfortunately not here tonight because he's at a chorus concert. I don't think we have... Do we have anybody? Oh, Mr. Simpson will accept it on his behalf. And last but not least, we have Jenna Gad from Eastern Montgomery High School.
Okay. The next item on our agenda are our 2023-2024 Leaders of the Year.
Good evening, Chair Tribaka, School Board members, and Dr. Brigant. It is a pleasure for me to be here tonight to present the MCPS Leaders of the Year Award. This spring, we announced this inaugural award, and last week, we recognized the first recipients of the MCPS Leader of the Year. As you know, MCPS has recognized Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Employee of the Year for many years now. This year, the school division decided to introduce an award to recognize outstanding leaders in MCPS. We know that strong leaders make a positive difference in the lives of our students and staff. I worked with the committee comprised of both certified and classified staff members representing different employee groups, developed the criteria, a nomination process, and selection process for this award. I would first like to recognize the employees who participated on this committee and contributed their time and ideas to the implementation. Thank you to Tara Almany, Heather Gardner, Julie Monday, Kathy Odell, Lori Walls, Guiney Wood Setser, and Stacy Wright. And if any of these employees are here tonight, I would ask them to step forward so they can assist with recognizing our recipients. All MCPS employees had the opportunity to nominate an outstanding leader in the school division. Two leaders were selected as MCPS Leaders of the Year, one as an instructional leader and one as an operational leader. Both were selected after nomination from their peers. I will begin with the instructional leader of the year. It's an honor to announce that Shane Gwynn is the instructional leader of the year. Mr. Gwynn serves as an assistant principal at Christiansburg High School. He has worked for MCPS for 20 years, including 10 years as a teacher, three years as an athletic director, and seven years as an assistant principal. Mr. Gwynn fosters the success and best interests of all students by promoting a vision focused on student learning, staff support, and school improvement. He is respected by students, colleagues, and the community because he cultivates a positive learning environment and creates a culture of respect and caring. One staff member noted that optimism and openness are key to Shane's leadership. He readily acknowledges that we all have difficult goals we are striving for, and yet he encourages students and staff to do their best to reach those goals. His confidence that we can do difficult things is encouraging and emboldening to all of us. Mr. Gwynn is appreciated by staff for his positive, calm, and encouraging disposition, his ability to problem-solve, communicate effectively, lead a team through challenges, and his dedication to supporting the needs and best interests of students and staff. At this time, I would like Mr. Gwynn to come forward so we can recognize him as the MCPS Instructional Leader of the Year. It is now an honor to announce Jamie Warren as the MCPS Operational Leader of the Year. Mr. Warren serves as the Electrical and Plumbing Lead in the Facilities Department. He has worked for MCPS for 11 years, including six years as an HVAC electrician and five years as a facilities lead. Mr. Warren excels in his leadership ability by using his skills and knowledge to serve the needs and best interests of the school division. He contributes to a safe and positive environment for both students and staff by effectively supporting and managing the operation and use of resources within his department and the school division. Mr. Warren is appreciated for his ability to build collaborative and effective relationships with coworkers and teachers and to serve as a positive role model for students. One staff member noted that Jamie has fostered valuable relationships with people throughout the school system. He has a great relationship with his staff, and he works hard to ensure school needs are met under his areas of expertise. Mr. Warren responds quickly to emergencies, addresses work orders promptly, and communicates effectively. He is dedicated to serving the needs of the school division. At this time, I would like Mr. Warren to come forward so we can recognize him as the MCPS Operational Leader of the Year.
At this time, we will pause for a 10-minute break for the board members to greet our honorees.
It is my pleasure to be here this evening to recognize the May Senior of the Month for As is sometimes the case, the students who most deserve this distinction are the busiest Logan is unable to attend this evening because she's the goalkeeper on our girls' soccer team, and they have a game this evening. She is attempting not only to keep her team's undefeated streak alive, but she also has She has yet to allow a goal this season, and I really hope that I didn't just jinx While Logan can't be here, her parents Stacy and Josh Boone are here to accept the award, and I asked them to come forward at this time. I'd like to now read a quote from one of your teachers, Britten Hippel. She is bright and inquisitive, asking probing questions that provide insights which not only demonstrate her interest and grasp of science, but add greatly to the value of Logan also brings her leadership skills as a student athlete, as she is a multi-year letter winner in volleyball, soccer, and basketball. EMHS will truly miss her when she graduates in May and attends James Madison University."
You were just in it for the gavel. All right. Our next agenda item is public address. We welcome the opportunity to hear from students, parents, employees, and community members about educational matters in this community. As a reminder, the Board sets aside 30 minutes to start our public address. We have options to extend in 30-minute increments, which Ms. Drake will remind us of. And if there are additional speakers after 90 minutes, the Board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional 30-minute session at the end of the business meeting. The clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions, the fewer speakers get to address the Board. I'll call each speaker up by name in the order they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the Board, and the Board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screen will show when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county where you live. The first speaker is Desiree Smith.
Good evening. I'm Desiree Smith, and I reside in Montgomery County. I currently have three 6th graders enrolled at Christiansburg Middle School, and I am here to inform you that the administrators of CMS are failing our students. On March 24th, my son was excused from class to use the restroom. While indisposed, another student from the same class entered the neighboring stall, stood on the toilet, and videoed my son. Because of past experiences and lack of intervention from Andrew Hippel and Anita Alderman, my son chose to inform the school... or chose to not inform the school, my husband, or myself of the incident that occurred that day. On March 28th, all three of my children were informed by their peers that there was a video being shown around the school of my son and that his penis was visible in the video. When we asked my son why he did not tell us about the incident, he responded, "I didn't tell because I was afraid that the principal would think it was my fault and that I would somehow get in trouble again." I immediately called the 6th grade principal to inform her of the video. Her response was, and I quote, "Oh, my God. I will call the mother and tell her to delete the video." I informed Alderman that this was child pornography, possible distribution, and this was a felonious act. When relaying this information to Principal Hippel on April 17th during a meeting about an unrelated incident, he stated that Alderman did not call the mother, that she called Hippel, and he told her not to tell the mother to delete the video because it would make it difficult to investigate. CMS administrators did not contact law enforcement that day. My husband reported the incident that evening, and when he spoke to the SRO on the phone, no one from the school had reached out to him concerning my son or the video. We filed a police report the following day, and at the time of our meeting with SRO, the school still had not informed him of the incident. CMS administrators are mandated reporters by law. On March 28th, Anita Alderman and Andrew Hippel broke the law and failed my son once again. again. Since previously mentioned incident, I have had to pick my son up from school because he was being harassed over being a snitch and involving the police. I've had to meet with Principal Hippel to advocate for my son, who was attacked during dodgeball and PE, and most recently, my son's shoes and cellphone were stolen from his gym locker by students that were not even supposed to be in the gym at that time. Since the end of March, we have filed two police reports regarding issues at CMS. Christiansburg Middle School is out of control. Administrators are using their own interpretation of MCPS Code of Conduct, as well as Virginia Public Code sections. Students are being singled out and not treated fairly. CMS is severely understaffed for the amount of students enrolled, and there is a clear lack of supervision. The teachers are not being supported by administrators, and I believe that the teachers are hesitant to correct students due to lack of administrative support. The instances I brought to your attention tonight are just a few of many issues that I've dealt with since August. And in closing, I'm asking you, the board, to consider the removal of Andrew Hippel and Anita Alderman, not only from Christiansburg Middle School, but from Montgomery County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next speaker is Anna Vajean.
Hi, my name is Anna Vajean, and I live in District A. Four weeks ago, I talked about the culture of dishonesty and disrespect documented in the StudySync report. I gave specific examples showing how central office administration violated two key principles in the Parameters section of the strategic plan, principles outlining the importance of integrity, respect, and open and honest communication. Today, I will tell you how central administration also violated Parameter 1, which states that we will base all decisions on what is best for students. In fact, throughout the implementation of both StudySync and Benchmark, administrators failed to put students' needs first. All students suffered under the rushed implementation of these programs. But my comment today focuses on gifted students. According to the Gifted Plan, gifted students are identified as students who require differentiated curriculum, courses, services, and opportunities to meet their educational needs. They require differentiated curriculum to meet their educational needs. And yet, the administrator of ELA curriculum had no plans to deliver differentiated curriculum to gifted students until Year 3 of StudySync implementation. The StudySync report documents that, at a teacher training event held in October 2022, all discussion of differentiating for gifted students was shut down, with the ELA administrators stating that we will probably have that worked out by Year 3 of implementation. This issue should have been worked out well before the start of Year 1. Similarly, with respect to Benchmark, there were no plans to differentiate curriculum in either whole group or small group instruction for over two years. The current Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction explained in a conversation in January of this year, 2003, 2023, 2.5 years into the Benchmark rollout, that no classrooms had yet been furnished with books that would expand the ELA curriculum for gifted students. And her goal was to have books in place for Grades 3 and 4 only by next year, the fourth year of implementation. Not only was there no district plan for differentiation, but teachers were actually forbidden from selecting and using materials that would allow them to differentiate instruction for their own students. The failure of the administration to allow teachers to deliver appropriately differentiated curriculum is inexcusable. And from what I'm hearing, the problems continue to this day. My questions are, do you, the board, commit to holding administrators accountable for the lack of appropriate differentiation for gifted students over the course of StudySync and Benchmark implementation? And moving forward, do you commit to allowing teachers the flexibility they need to provide appropriately differentiated instruction to their students? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vajean. The next speaker is Sean Moore, and then after that, Chris Thomas.
Hi, my name is Sean Moore. I'm here tonight to offer my exterior cleaning services to Montgomery County Public Schools, more so here to ask for, and urge for you all, to plead to the Board of Supervisors to allow and extend funding for the maintenance of the facilities and upkeep of the exteriors. I've made note to the Board of Supervisors that a clean exterior is crucial for the well-being and mental health of the children, and the feeling of safety and security for the parents as they drop them off, and the overall general upkeep and structural integrity of the buildings. So I urge for you to make that plea and do it soon enough so that we can provide the service locally and at a cost that is low while maintaining local and known quality versus outsourcing it to who knows where. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next up is Chris Thomas.
Chris Thomas, Christiansburg, Virginia. Members of the Board, last week, our Board of Supervisors voted dramatically underfund Montgomery County Public Schools to pay for the biggest tax cut in this county's history. As a result, our school system now faces a multimillion-dollar shortfall. I don't know how many of you watched last week's Board of Supervisors meeting. I was there. I saw Ms. Franklin in attendance as well. The rest of you, if you've not already, I would urge you to go back and watch the recordings of the meeting. Pay attention, but not just to the vote, but to the discussions around it. Members of the Board, parents and citizens of Montgomery County, you should all be furious. Despite a tidal wave of emails begging them not to, despite unanimous objection and public comment, despite repeated attempts by the minority to find any common ground, to claw back even a small percentage of the funds, a bare and partisan majority of the Board of Supervisors voted to defund our school system in order to give rich landowners in Montgomery County a tax break. And if that weren't bad enough, their justification for ignoring the widespread opposition to the measure was that many of those opposed are MCPS teachers. Let me say that again. The Montgomery County Board of Supervisors justified ignoring their own constituents just because they're teachers. They openly and on the record stated that they did not give weight to the letters and calls and emails they received because they came from teachers. And then they had the temerity to say they supported the schools. This is a profound betrayal of the public trust, and it falls unfairly, unreasonably, and unfortunately upon you to salvage what can be preserved in our schools. Cuts will be necessary, deep, painful, heartbreaking cuts. Members of the Board, I have three kids in our schools. They love and appreciate the opportunities that MCPS has made available to them. They adore their teachers, their classes, the amazing field trips, the diverse clubs, the fulfilling extracurriculars and competitive athletics. I want them to have all those things. But the Board of Supervisors disagrees, and so hard choices must be made. Members of the Board, you have a constitutional obligation in the Commonwealth to provide our children with a public education, with classes and instruction. The rest, every scrap of it, is optional, much as it pains me to say it, and I know it pains you, Ms. Bond. The Board of Supervisors is tied to your hands. Football, soccer, lacrosse, band, basketball, swimming, golf, yes, even track and field and cross-country must all be on the chopping block before this school system even considers laying off its first teacher. And I hope that when each of those programs are cut, when the cancellations are sent out, when angry and disappointed parents and students are informed that the programs they love are being cut, that this board will clearly and unambiguously communicate why those cuts became necessary, because the Board of Supervisors has abdicated its responsibilities to our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. All right, I think that's the end of public address. Public address is closed. Move on to consent items. If no one wishes to move any items out of consent, we will consider them approved. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of the bills as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the financial summary report?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Drake, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. All right, on to the business meeting. We'll start with a report from the Superintendent. Dr. Bragan?
Thank you, Chair Tribaka. Just got a few things to mention. The first is I want to compliment Dr. Widener and her whole team for putting together the Leadership Awards that we recognized tonight, and to the fine winners we had, and all the people that were recommended. You know, a school system only runs well with all the people that are contained within it, and leadership occurs at every level, you know, not just the superintendent or the people at the central office. And sometimes the most critical leaders are the ones in the classroom, in the buildings, and in the, you know, driving the buses, and in the Ops Center and all that. So I'm grateful to all the work that Dr. Widener did and her team, and as well as the board for recognizing those leaders today, because they're the reason why our schools function so well. And leadership at every level, at every level, is critical to its success. So kudos to the recipients tonight. I also want to recognize that on Saturday, Harding Avenue Elementary School celebrated 50 years in education for servicing the needs of that community. I heard it was a great event. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend to a sudden death in my family, and I had to be in New Jersey. But kudos to Mr. Seismore and the entire faculty and staff who helped put that together. And I'm sure there'll be many more years of success for Harding Avenue Elementary School in serving the needs of that community. The next I want to talk about is, Chris Thomas and Sean Moore mentioned, you know, the Board of Supervisors vote the other day for the budget that they put forth. This school board, with the recommendation of our team, voted on a budget that asked for a $6.1 million increase to do what we thought was appropriate and to fund our educational programs at the level they needed to, to make sure we met all of our students' needs, continue to grow, and provide disruptive educational programs for which this county is well-known. When the Board of Supervisors developed their budget under the tutelage of Greg Meadows as the administrator, they allocated $4 million of increase for the school. And then when the vote took place last week, or whenever that was, I forget the exact date, the allocation was significantly less, around $2.4 million. And they also chose to get away, move away from the money that was allocated to help correct that calculation error by the Department of Education. So that final increase for us comes out to about $1.1 million, and that's not enough to do what we need to do. And there will have to be hard decisions made and difficult choices that we will bring to this board at our next meeting, what our recommendations will be. We're going to try our best to keep all our programs intact, and any personnel changes that we need to make place, we'll try to have minimal impact in the classroom, and try to make most of those, try to do most of those through attrition, where we won't have to have anybody lose their jobs. But there's going to be difficult decisions to be made. And we're going to come to the Board of Education, Dr. Whittaker's team on the finance side, and us on the instructional side, with Dr. Wickham are going to propose to you our suggestion next week on how we do that. But $4.5 million reduction is a lot of money, and that ultimately is going to mean programs and personnel. So, and school board, did I say Board of Education again?
Yes.
All right. I'm a slow learner. I apologize. School board, not Board of Education. And if that happens again, just smack me in the back of the head. Nonetheless, you know, it's a serious matter, and it's something that we have to deal with, and we will, we'll do the best we can. But at some point, I said this at the Board of Supervisors, the meeting before last, people move to this community for a variety of reasons. And one of the reasons people move here with young families is because of the school system and the public schools that we provide to our community. And when we start underfunding those, and this has not become a place where young families want to raise their children and avail themselves to the fine public education, we all start to lose our value, and the community loses value, the homes lose their value. So I do think that action was penny wise and pound foolish, and that's my position. I do believe in the core of who I am, that the public schools are the core of our democracy, and when those start to fail, and we stop funding those, we're all in trouble. All right. So we will bring that to the school board for the next meeting. And then lastly, I just want to mention, and I didn't come up with this name, but it does kind of have a ring to it. Our first tea with Dr. B is going to happen tomorrow at Auburn High School, and I rarely refer to myself as Dr. B. It's always Bernie Bragan Superintendent, but nonetheless, it rhymed. But it's a continuation of what we started when I first came in December, to have community forums, community outreaches, and it's welcome to anybody. We try to vary the times so everybody can attend. So this one's going to be at Auburn High School at the library tomorrow, 3:15. If people can attend, stop by, have a little tea, I guess. I'm really a coffee guy, but we'll work on that. Doesn't really rhyme as well. But there'll be others coming out in the next couple of weeks, so please avail yourselves if you want to just check in, chat, come by and share your perspective. I would love to do that, and I think it's really important for me, as Superintendent, to be accessible to the community, and I plan to continue to do that moving forward. That's all I have, Board Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bragan.
I got that right, right? Board Chair? Okay.
So, next item on the agenda is just, given the state of the budget, we wanted to have an opportunity for board members to at least have a little bit of discussion on this. So I'm just going to open up the floor for discussion by board members.
I'll go first. So I did watch the board meeting. I was in New Jersey with my parents, and it was really disappointing to see everyone dug in so deep to their belief that a 70-cent tax versus 73 would make such a significant difference in everyone's lives, yet willing to throw away $4 million that was supposed to go to our schools, or $4.5 million that was supposed to go to our schools. And I appreciate that we have very tough times now, and every penny counts. I totally understand that. I would like to, it would have been nice to see maybe some compromise. There is something between 73 and 70, but somehow, they couldn't seem to figure out that there were 3 cents in between, and maybe they could have come up with something a little different than 73, and at least we wouldn't have had to take such a big cut. I echo some of what Dr. Bragan just said. As an HR manager here locally, hiring at the university, I can tell you that one of the big self-factors I have to come here is our amazing school system. And as soon as they find out I'm on the school board, they have lots of questions to ask. And it is, it is great to be able to use that as a recruiting tool, and that is now something that I am concerned about. I don't think the 70 versus 73 cents is what's going to keep people coming here, but I do think a decrease in the services of our schools and our school system. And if you didn't see this, and I posted it on my Facebook page, but one of our high schools was named the Number 15 High School in the state of Virginia, the only southwest Virginia high school. And congrats to Adam Simpson and his staff for their work at Blacksburg High School. But I feel that way about all of our schools, that they are wonderful schools that provide a great education. And why the world feels like we need to get away from public education, I am just, it just amazes me that that's even a conversation. I don't understand why something that we've had for so many years, that has provided so much to so many people who live in this country, it is what our whole country is really built on, is the strong education system that we have. And to think that now we're willing to take money away from that is very disheartening. I mean, I can't even think of the right words to explain it. But anyway, all I can say is, when you go to vote in November, think about that, because that's important, because it's the majority of the people who are really skimping for pennies, and really who my, who some, the Board of Supervisors says are, why they're doing this, their children are going to lose, their children are the ones who are going to lose out, because they aren't the ones who are going to be able to afford to send their kids to a private school. They're going to be the people who are going to get hurt. It's their, their children are going to be, lose services. Those are the kids that we should be helping, and instead, these are the kids that are going to lose the most. So I guess I probably used more my time than I should. I'll stop.
So I was at the meeting, I think, off, whatever. And I have to say... And I have to say, that was quite a meeting. The discussion, the active debate that went back and forth was something I really rarely see on that board. But there was a lot of passion as to making sure that the schools would be funded. I've been thinking all week what word to use to describe the statements that if you were an employee of MCPS, you really didn't matter as far as your contact and your input about the budget for this county. The vast majority of employees in Montgomery County schools live in Montgomery County and pay taxes too. That was just, and it wasn't just said once, it was said twice. Even after the chair was pointed, it was pointed out that that shouldn't matter. But it was stated again. If you are an employee of Montgomery County school system and you reach out to a supervisor, even though they were saying, "We're listening to our constituents," you don't count. That was, that was just unbelievable for me to hear that and then hear it again. If we don't fund public education, as everybody's going to say, and you've heard already, it's going to be a disaster for this county. I'm a taxpayer. I struggle with sometimes figuring out how I'm going to pay bills and do this or do that. But one of the things that I do understand is if taxes are not paid, the services that we rely on, not just the public schools, but our emergency services, our maintenance services, everything that we rely on in this county that helps this county stand out and makes people want to come here, it's going to deteriorate and folks aren't going to want to come. Why? But the public schools, this is our future. Our teachers and all the rest of our employees who keep this system running deserve to have their fair share too. They work hard, they deserve it. Just like the county's employees deserve their 7% raise, our employees deserve their raises too. There are probably very few people who don't get a raise every year or at least some kind of adjustment. And for it to be said, for the last seven, eight years, they've gotten a raise and then all of a sudden this year you just don't get one, we went through that before and put us way behind as far as our salary scale and being able to compensate and attract teachers and employees to Montgomery County. And now, we're going to be behind the ball. Because every year I listen to what the rest of the area is talking about as far as compensation and things they're doing to attract, Roanoke 7%, Pulaski 7%, trying to get above Montgomery County because they've had to compete with us because folks are coming here. And last year, we were the county that was also struggling like everyone else because of the shortage of teachers and employees who cannot work, not don't want to work, but cannot work in some of our other areas because there's just not enough pay and benefits. We can't operate that way. It's just a fact. So there are relief programs, as was stated. But that decision that was made the other night, I also believe was made out of spite because there are some things that this board has done that they don't like. And I have publicly told them, you know, they're not entitled to the information and they wouldn't get it. And they didn't. And they don't like things like that. So actions like collective bargaining, they didn't like that either. But they're two different boards, this board and that board, they don't manage this board. They are supposed to fund public schools just like everything else in the county. And they have just shamed themselves because I absolutely believe it's because of spite.
Agreed. I'll go next. Excuse me. I see what they did as a blatant disregard of funding public education. We have tried everything. We've tried giving them a budget that lists everything under the sun. And we tried giving them a needs-based budget. And neither one seems to get us any further at any time. Consecutively, for the past five to six years, they are giving us less and less of a percentage of their revenue every year. I hope I didn't get that wrong, did I, Ms. Whitaker? Did I get that wrong? I said, "In the past four or five years, the percentage of funding by the Board of Supervisors to MCPS has dropped."
So the way, the percent of their
Revenue.
Designated revenue. So, you know, when you look at their total budget, we're a big chunk of that. So I want to say, don't get me exact on the number, there's just like 238 million. We're 130 something million of that. So we're a big chunk of that. That money, a bunch of it, of that comes, what doesn't come from local, comes from state and federal. So those funds come through. After what they have designated, those amounts have gone down percentage-wise. Katie, is there anything you want to say different on that? Any better way to say that?
Okay. It is very small, but it, you know, It is going to.
Of those undesignated funds.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Whitaker. On top of that, I want to make sure that everybody realizes that we also get from this state funding per student. And that funding per student that we receive is based off of the revenue that the county has. So if the county has a higher revenue, we actually get less per student. Because the thought is, the way it should work is that the county should be able to make up that difference. Because this calculation says that the county can provide that extra money because their revenue has increased. So essentially, I guess what I'm trying to say here is, we got hit with a double whammy. We got not only the money for public education from the Board of Supervisors, but because our county has a higher revenue, we will get less per student from the state.
I'll be brief, I'll be redundant. A lot of good points have already been made. And certainly, nothing that everybody up here doesn't already know, but, you know, when property values go up, it's because people want to be in your county, right? Because you're doing good stuff, you've got good schools, you've got good things, people want to be there. So, you know, that should be a good thing. And when probably people want to be here, they're bringing their, they're bringing their kids with them, right? We've got developments all around the county right now, they're bringing new students in. So those students need schools, they need education. And it's, it does seem short-sighted to make this change now when the county is going through a lot of growth. And I don't know if it was a certain number of rich landowners that drove that conversation or not. I haven't seen those numbers. But certainly, who's going to, who's going to lose out on that are our students. And that really is a shame.
I'm just going to say that, you know, since I've been on the board, I've constantly talked about we need to make sure people are aware of what not only the public schools do, but I truly think a lot of community members don't realize, I don't believe, I listen to people every day, how taxes affect the things they need. People can sit back and say, "Oh, that's not true." It is true. People only see what the finances affect their household. And when I share with people, because when they reassessed, it was huge. Everybody was talking about it, everybody hated it, everybody was miserable. But I tried to explain to them, "You don't understand. You want that fire and rescue there at your house as soon as you need them. You want those schools, you want those stadiums, you want those teams for your kids to play on, you want the best teachers for them. You can't have it without the extra taxes or the taxes that are appropriate." So I think one of the other things that we need to do is to educate the community on how bad this can hurt. And that's where our local media can help us and make sure they realize that, you know, the community needs to know. It's just like I was sharing somebody yesterday, what all Montgomery County schools offer students. And I know we send out pamphlets, I know we send out, and I think that we do a great job of doing what we can do to get the community wiser about all the great programs we offer. But I truly believe sometimes our community just doesn't see it. And I don't know how to change that. I don't know how to make people aware. I've always said, I think we sometimes have a priority issue. You know, we don't always put our priorities right, you know? Even though I'm a sports advocate, I fuss, you can't, you can't get in certain games, but people don't want to pay an extra $25 for taxes. You know, so it's, you can't get in some of the restaurants on Friday nights and Saturday nights, but nobody wants to pay a dollar or two more for taxes for us to have the better fire and rescue in schools and roads and police and whatever we need on an everyday basis to keep our community members safe and smart and educated and working. So make sure you let your community, your neighbors know what taxes are needed for our community and what they do.
Okay, so I'm going to round up the end. So not to be redundant, I'm going to just kind of echo what Ms. Bond said because that's kind of what I had in the back of my mind as well. I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors for everything that they've done for Montgomery County Public Schools. Ms. Franklin and I were talking earlier and they do do a lot for us and they are good to us. There's a lot of, a lot of other counties that I have talked to at conferences and nationwide places that we have gone and just heard that they really don't get anything from their Board of Supervisors. So I do want to start out by saying that I do want to thank them. I do believe that every single one of them has the love for the students and the love for this community and their best interest at heart. Again, we have to recognize and get our community involved to realize, maybe spreading the word. I've always, always said, you know, our Board of Supervisors only gets so much. As our community grows, which it has grown tremendously, we are now having to look at paying for what used to be volunteer, emergency services, rescue squad, fire, all of that's going to paid positions. That's all money coming out of the Board of Supervisors budget. I feel for them. I mean, it's, one, I can't imagine putting one over another. Everything that they've got to fund is equally important. But as our community's growing and we're, these people are volunteering, we're not getting, we're not getting that volunteer work ethic type anymore. So we're having issues there. We're getting more people moving into the county. Our schools are getting bigger, getting fuller quicker. We've got to have more people to take care of our kids in every sense of the word, teachers, staff, you name it. I know we're not perfect, but I do want the community to know that we have got an awesome school system. We've got great teachers, we've got great staff, we've got great administration. And if you want to see just an inkling of that, I invite everyone to come to one of these four graduations happening in three weeks and watch some of these, some of these kids walking across the stage because that speaks volumes as to what this public school system offers and what these kids are going to go out here and do. We've had them up here on the board, we've had them come public speak. We've turned out great kids and it's been because of everyone involved in this school system. You know, as we grow as a community, like Ms. Bond stated, we want things, but everybody knows that things, as we grow, needs more funding. I know it hurts when people have taxes raised. I'm going to agree, I don't think that's fun. But as things are coming up and as we see things that we need, and I've always been a huge advocate of us going above our Board of Supervisors, and I've said this several times and I'm going to say it again, reach out to our legislative people. Because we are not getting funded at that level that we need to be getting funded at. And if we start really making a showing there, because it starts at the top and then it trickles down. So I'm going to, again, ask people to reach out to your legislative, to your senators, tell them what we need. We're a growing population, we're not getting what we need. So I'm going to throw that out there as well. So I think that's all I have to say on that.
Well, thanks, Board. I'll go last and
Well, if you're going to go last, can I just say something?
Oh, sure, I mean, you can go after me, I don't have to go last. Okay. So I did, I don't want to, I agree with everything everyone said, so I won't repeat that. But I would like to add a few other things. I do want to reiterate what one of our speakers, I think it was Mr. Thomas, said, that this really is a tax, this is a cut. This is a tax cut that will benefit mostly rich landowners in this county. And I understand that one of the reasons that the board wanted to do this was because they felt that the public was feeling inflationary pressures. But everybody's feeling inflationary pressures. So if you try to fix that problem by not keeping up with inflations, inflation with the school system or any other thing that you fund, it's essentially a cut. So this really is a cut. And, you know, I've been on the board for almost eight years now and, you know, we have these disagreements all the time with, to what level to fund schools. And I don't know, you know, there's a side of me that's starting to wonder, you know, maybe, maybe the board, maybe some members of the Board of Supervisors are just doing their job. And it really is that their, that their constituents support that. And, you know, what do we do then? And where do we go forward then? It's also possible that their constituents just don't really understand and they maybe wouldn't support those cuts if they truly understood. So I think that moving forward, we do need to work on some simplified numbers and metrics that we can give to the public, especially ahead of the budget discussions. I think we need to seriously think, this is something I laid out to the previous superintendent, it was never done. I really think that we need to start thinking about getting a priority budget in place where here's our budget and, you know, we're asking for $6 million more dollars. If you give us, you know, $5 million, here's the things that are going to get cut. If you give us $4 million, here's the other things that are going to get cut. Lay it out there for the public and for the Board of Supervisors to see. And the third thing I would say moving forward is that we need to look to other revenue sources. And this came up in one of our meetings with the Board of Supervisors, possibly the last one that we had, although it's been a while. But, you know, they talked about Virginia Tech giving us money, which I think is a pipe dream. I mean, Virginia Tech contributes in a lot of ways to our community. I don't think that they have an obligation to fund our schools. The state surely doesn't see it that way. I'm happy to have that conversation. But, but I think there are two other entities in this county that do have the ability to levy taxes and raise a significant amount of money. And that's the town of Blacksburg and the town of Christiansburg. And so, you know, I think that if the citizens of those towns put pressure on them to join forces with us, I think that that's a conversation that this board should engage in, in the future. Because I don't, I don't see things changing on this discussion to the degree that they need to. And I think we start, need to start thinking outside the box on that one. So that's my input. Go ahead, Penny.
So I want to follow up with Ms. Parton. I thanked the supervisors last week because they have stepped up throughout the years and helped fill those gaps. And I even told them, "I understand that you don't want to have to put up a million point two six that the state government did as a shortfall. So not only Montgomery County is going to lose millions of dollars, but other counties are going to use, lose significant portions of their budgets. And localities are going to be asked to fill that gap again." I don't think that's fair because of that mistake. They need to figure out how to fix it and give us the money that we were told we would have. But, again,
But again, the county has stepped up in the past and done some amazing things to help push this school system forward. But that does not negate what happened the other night, because that was something in all my years I had not seen before. And it was again, it was out of spite. I think there, again, there are things that supervisors, some supervisors don't agree with that is happening with public education, and if we don't fund it, they can't do it. I believe with everything in me, that is what the heart of a couple of those people are feeling. And that is just wrong, plain and simple. This is not a personal thing, this is about this county and how we move forward. And that is, was not taken into consideration because if it had, we wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. We have not had a joint meeting with the supervisors in probably a year or more. That was happening on a regular basis to build relationships, to have conversations and to have better understandings as to the needs on both sides. That's something that needs to change. And it is not this side who is not willing to set dates and hold dates and be willing to meet. Those conversations need to begin again, and we need to start listening. Because I understand their needs, I understand our needs. I did the Sheriff's Academy, the first one they ever did, and understood what it's like when you only have five deputies who are patrolling the whole county, and someone has to be here, or someone's sick, or that, and you may have only two or three deputies that are patrolling the whole county. I started understanding budget and how things work long, long time ago. And we just cannot, we have to understand those tax dollars, especially when they don't come from the state and they don't come from the feds, that we as a community have to make a commitment as to what we want our community to be and how much we are willing to, in some cases, sacrifice to make that happen. But it has to happen.
All right, anyone else? So the revised budget presentation, we'll, we'll get, see that on May 16th, which is the next meeting, correct? Okay.
And it's going to be painful.
Do I have a, moving on to the Math and Science elective textbook adoption? Do I have a motion to approve Math and Science electives textbook adoption as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there, this is the, we already had a first reading on this, is there any discussion on this board? I think for, for me, one of the things I'm disappointed about and that I'd like to see changed, and I think some other board members have said this in the past, and, I mean, the timeline for this thing started in January, I think of 2023 of this year. So when, when we have textbooks and curriculum coming up for adoption, we need to push that out to parents. I don't think it's sufficient to, to put it, you know, just on the website in hopes that people will find it. So that's all I'll say.
And not just parents, community.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Do, let's see, I have a motion, do I have a, did I get a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
In a second, okay. So no more discussion? Drake, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
I'm going to abstain.
Sure, no problem. Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstention.
Motion carries. All right. Next up is the Special Education Annual Plan. This is, this was also brought to us, I think, for a first reading, and we'll vote on it tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the Special Education Annual Plan as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion, Board? Thank you, Dr. Walker. All right, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. All right. Next is unfinished business. I don't, do not believe we have any items of unfinished business. Are there any items of, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I was going to ask if there's any items of new businesses, let's talk about it under new. No, no, it's fine, let's talk about it, let's talk about it, at least briefly. I mean, I think, I thought I had sent out, did I not send out an email on that? I think we, we did not, we were not able to find a weekend that worked for even six out of the seven board members, much less seven. So I think we're going to try again for, for late summer, early fall.
August through October.
August through, yeah.
Oh, that's good, because I was going to say my availability has changed now, so.
Yeah, so, but
We'll get some dates.
Yeah, we'll get some dates and if, you know, and some topics and we'll move. Oh, okay, sorry. I, and I
No.
Yeah. All right. Any other items of new business, Board?
Yes, if you don't mind, and if the Board so wishes. I don't know if I'm the only board member who is still a little concerned, actually more than a little concerned, about this, but I'm going to just speak for myself right now. After hearing some of the things that were brought up at public address tonight, I still have very much so a growing concern with Christiansburg Middle School. I haven't just heard things from this Ms. Smith tonight, I continually get things from parents. And at this point, I'm wondering if there's, we could start getting a status or wondering what our game plan is, or what are we doing to try to address this situation? Because it seems like it's still very serious and we're still having lots of issues. So I don't know if I'm the only board member that would like to get some type of feedback on that, or
I, I agree, but I was thinking that was something, I don't know how much we can discuss, if that's closed session, because that's personnel related.
Right.
So I was thinking we might want to bring it up in closed session.
Just asking for updates and what we're, you know, what our game plan is to try to get that situation under control, basically.
We're aware of it, and we will give the Board regular updates if that's helpful at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
I think we have consensus on that. So is there, are there any other items of new business, Board? Okay, any, are there any announcements, information? Upcoming school board meetings are on Board Docs, under Agenda Prep, and next item is closed session. So do I have a motion to enter into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss three personnel matters?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries.
I was thinking we might want to bring it up in closed session.
Just asking for updates and what we're, you know, what our game plan is to try to get that situation under control, basically.
We're aware of it, and we will give the Board regular updates if that's helpful at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Any, thanks, Ms. Parton. I think we have consensus on that. So is there, are there any other items of new business, Board? Okay, any, are there any announcements, information? Upcoming school board meetings are on Board Docs, under Agenda Prep, and next item is closed session. So do I have a motion to enter into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss three personnel matters?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries. All right. Next is unfinished business. I don't, do not believe we have any items of unfinished business. Are there any items of, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I was going to ask if there's any items of new businesses, let's talk about it under new. No, no, it's fine, let's talk about it, let's talk about it, at least briefly. I mean, I think, I thought I had sent out, did I not send out an email on that? I think we, we did not, we were not able to find a weekend that worked for even six out of the seven board members, much less seven. So I think we're going to try again for, for late summer, early fall.
August through October.
August through, yeah.
Oh, that's good, because I was going to say my availability has changed now, so.
Yeah, so, but
We'll get some dates.
Yeah, we'll get some dates and if, you know, and some topics and we'll move. Oh, okay, sorry.
Before it gets too cold.
Yeah. I, and I
No.
Yeah.
We'll pair, we'll
All right. Any other items of new business, Board?
Yes, if you don't mind, and if the Board so wishes. I don't know if I'm the only board member who is still a little concerned, actually more than a little concerned, about this, but I'm going to just speak for myself right now. After hearing some of the things that were brought up at public address tonight, I still have very much so a growing concern with Christiansburg Middle School. I haven't just heard things from this Ms. Smith tonight, I continually get things from parents. And at this point, I'm wondering if there's, we could start getting a status or wondering what our game plan is, or what are we doing to try to address this situation? Because it seems like it's still very serious and we're still having lots of issues. So I don't know if I'm the only board member that would like to get some type of feedback on that, or
I, I agree, but I was thinking that was something, I don't know how much we can discuss, if that's closed session, because that's personnel related.
Right.
So I was thinking we might want to bring it up in closed session.
Just asking for updates and what we're, you know, what our game plan is to try to get that situation under control, basically.
We're aware of it, and we will give the Board regular updates if that's helpful at the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Any, thanks, Ms. Parton. I think we have consensus on that. So is there, are there any other items of new business, Board? Okay, any, are there any announcements, information? Upcoming school board meetings are on Board Docs, under Agenda Prep, and next item is closed session. So do I have a motion to enter into closed session as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia to discuss three personnel matters?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Ms. Drake, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Ms. Cass?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Mr. Tribaka?
Yes.
Seven in favor?
Motion carries, we are in closed session. Thanks, everyone.